I call the regular Bucyrus City Council meeting to order for September 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Please stand and we'll start off with an invocation. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts, asking for your wisdom and guidance over this council and over the people of Bucyrus. Lord, your word teaches us in Matthew 25 that when we feed the hungry, welcome the stranger, and care for the least among us, we are serving you directly. Remind us always that every decision made in this chamber should reflect that love and compassion. Just as Jesus multiplied the loaves and fishes to feed thousands in Matthew 15, we ask you to multiply our efforts as leaders where resources may seem few. Grant us the faith to trust in your abundance and to see what we have with justice, fairness, and generosity. And Lord, through the words of Isaiah 58, you have commanded us to share our bread with the hungry and to clothe those in need. May this council never lose sight of that call to ensure our community is not only prosperous, but also merciful and caring. Bless our decisions, keep our minds clear, and our intentions pure. May everything we do tonight honor you and serve the people entrusted to our care. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Sir, you just made that denominational. Did you reach out to other types of religions to find out whether or not they would like to come in and do an invocation?
Please stand, join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have been requested by the police chief to move up the report to the beginning of the meeting here that he has submitted due to a special guest. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to move up the police chief's report to right now.
Mr. President.
Mr. Myers.
Before that, would you please conduct roll call?
I am so sorry.
Since we're required to be here, and I'd be happy to make that motion.
Roll call, please.
Meyer.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Moritz.
Here.
Sherick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Me.
Here.
I allow, make a motion to amend the agenda to allow the police chief to give his report at this time.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Agenda has been amended. Okay, Mr. Dorsey, you have the floor.
All right, good evening. First, I would like to ask Officer Wireman, please join me up here. This is something what I'm gonna want to try to do on a regular basis anytime. First of all, I have to apologize to you. Yeah, because this actually happened on April 14th. You know, it slipped through the cracks, it got past me. I was not the chief at the time, I've only been the chief since July. So on April 14th, Officer Wireman heard BFD being dispatched to Union Street in reference to an unresponsive female. Officer Wireman left station, he arrived on scene. He observed Jerry Brown, who was standing over his mother. Obviously, he was upset, he was shaken up, he didn't know what to do, he was panicking a little bit. He was very upset because his mother's unresponsive. You know, it's a traumatic experience he was experiencing. And when Officer Wireman got there, Jerry told him she was cutting the grass, and she passed out. So Officer Wireman checked for a pulse, he didn't feel one, he immediately started giving her CPR, as he should. Officer Wireman started giving her CPR, and as he is giving her CPR, he seen her gasp for breath. Took a couple breaths, and then soon as she took that breath, he heard EMS getting really close. You know, he checked for the pulse again, and once he felt the pulse, he felt it really faintly. You know, I don't know if you guys really felt for pulses. You know, it's kind of hard, especially when your adrenaline's running too. And as he was checking, he thought he felt it, he thought he could see her chest moving. EMS was there, they verified it, and you know, today, Mrs. Brown's here with us. And I just want to say, you know, from the Bucyrs Police Department and from me, I do apologize it's never got to you sooner. I want to present you with the lifesaver award for your courageous and quick thinking that saved a life on April 14th. Your bravery in a moment of crisis was an inspiration to all and has earned you the deepest gratitude and respect of the community. Thank you.
I just want to say thanks to everybody. The support we get from the community really impacts what we do day to day on the road. At this point in time, we had multiple officers on duty due to our overlap, so I was able to respond as soon as I got here to assist EMS. Had I not been able to do that, I'm not sure she'd be here with us for her grandkids and her daughter. So I'm very thankful that we're working towards getting our staffing where it should be for a city this size. Just the training that goes into things that we do to assist the fire department, I want to thank the fire department without their work on the way to the hospital, all the way over to Galleon, sort of end up taking her. I mean, that's even more beneficial to her than just what I did. I basically was the Band-Aid to get her until when they got there. So I don't want to take away from anything they did, great crew, and they always show up really quick at times we need them, as long as they have the staffing they need as well. So that's all I really have to say. I appreciate the support that you guys give us, I mean, it means a lot, not every community has that. And that's why after everybody that's left here, I've stayed, I feel very appreciated here. And with Chief Dorsey, we're seeing a lot of great improvements really quick, so I'm really proud of that as well. Thank you.
All right, finishing up with my report, as a reminder, school is back in session. Please use extra caution even when you are traveling near school zones. Our children are our most valuable resources in our community. And also, just another reminder, we are going to be around school zones, and the speed limit is 20 miles per hour. Please slow down, don't be on your cellphone, because that's another charge for distracted driving. Also, something else, I was contacted, something as far as giving back to the community. I was honored when somebody asked me if I would read on the 50-yard line on, I lost the date, September 24th. It's reading under the lights, the elementary school. And I was like, wait a second, the only time I've ever read, it was a playbook on a football field. Now you want me to read Dr. Seuss? Absolutely! So I'm like, yes, I will absolutely do that, and I'm looking forward to it. It'll be September 24th, and it should be a good time. You know, like I said, as a police department, I want to do more with our community. That sounds like it should be a really good time for everybody. We're doing more business walkthroughs, part of our training, ongoing training. It'll help our officers become more familiar with our factories and businesses that we don't normally walk through. I'm personally guilty of this. I haven't been an Arctic Cat in probably 15 years. When I walked through there the other day, that place is gigantic. And I walked through, and I was really in awe. Now, why this is so important to know the infrastructure of the buildings? If there's an emergency situation, seconds matter. Some of these young guys aren't even from here. Every second does count, so we're gonna start having a better relationship with our communities, and I think that's an important step. Our officers also are going to continue our in-house education, or it's every week, continuing education, and they're encouraged to do some physical fitness after they do their house cleaning. So I better not see garbage laying around. So we gotta do our housekeeping, reports need writing, reports need typed, everything needs done. We're just trying to do everything to be better educated, that way we're better officers physically, mentally, and that way we can serve our community better. Another recent change I've made when it comes to public records. I posted this, and it got a huge reaction, of course. Other agencies have been doing it for several months. The difference is, they never posted it. Because this is back in April of this year, a lot of agencies started doing it when they were allowed to. I posted it simply because we were one of the last people in the area to start doing it. It's part of House Bill 315. Reason why we were one of the last people to start doing it, another obvious reason, different administrations. Went from Chief Ostenheimer, and then I just recently took over. Different people were doing records, and now I'm finally doing it, so we're one of the last people to do it. So unfortunately, we're catching up with everybody else. We're not doing it to be malicious towards anybody or anything like that. We're just trying to get on board with something we should have been doing all along. Also have a lot of questions about e-bikes. If people are allowed to have them on the roads, what are the regulations? What are people supposed to be doing? E-bikes are the same as bicycles, for the most part. Whenever people buy them, you have to pay attention whenever you purchase them. There's three classes, class 1, 2, and 3. Class 1 and 2 are exactly like bicycles, no regulations whatsoever. Anything, what you can do on a bicycle, you can do on an e-bike. Class 3, the only difference is you have to be 16 years old. Once again, it's up to your parents to pay attention to what you're buying. You can modify these bikes, that's the reason why they're so hard to regulate. And right now, everything's new with these, and they go way too fast. Whenever you buy them, it says it goes 28 miles per hour. It's something we're gonna keep working on, we're gonna keep trying to regulate them as best as we can, but of course, we can't be everywhere. And I want to remind everybody that September is suicide prevention month. Crawford County Suicide Prevention Coalition will be having their annual walk on September 13th at 9:00 AM. Please contact them for more information, if you'd like to be a part of that. As a department, we are here to serve our citizens, and we will be involved in more public events. The next event coming up this weekend is Bay Fall Family Festival. There's a tug-of-war competition in which I may have challenged the fire department. And they reluctantly accepted my challenge. So if nobody's doing anything, on September 6th at 11:00 AM, come out and you can watch the firefighters get dragged all the way across Harmon Field. Haven't came up with any type of punishment for Chief Schwemle yet, because he said they're gonna win, but I doubt it. Any questions before I leave the podium?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since that is no longer listed under committee reports, we should have a vote for accepting and filing this report.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mrs. Slater seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Report's been accepted. Vicki had provided the minutes that she changed from Miranda had originally done some minutes for July 8th. The minutes that were in the packet were the ones provided by Vicki. So does anybody have any questions about those minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes for the July 8th.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Sherick made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed, minutes are accepted. We're still waiting on the other minutes listed here. I'm just keeping track of them so that we don't get lost in regards to those. Could you plug that thing in back here? Thank you, Mr. Beaman. Okay, so granting permission for visitors to speak. Mr. White had pre-requested 10 minutes, so he has the floor at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get started, I would like, oh, I'm sorry, Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get started, I would like to dispel any hearsay rumors. I write my own words, I owe nothing to anyone. I say what I feel and I investigate what I want. I like to learn new things, and that's why I come prepared with facts and not fiction. If anyone has positive proof of any real facts to disprove my findings, please bring them out in the public eye, not just snide comments or false narratives, the facts. I would greatly appreciate that. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Before anyone jumps, anyone in this room jumps on the bandwagon of assumptions, just remember that everyone is being recorded in a public space of any public meeting, even if that meeting goes into recess or executive session or before or after that meeting. There's no expectation of privacy in public. Anyone can be recorded, anything on, can be recorded on anything at any time without your permission, except in a public bathroom, that is in law. Now this nonsense that there is too many public records requests is drama made up by the very soul of our government body. Many people that work for this city don't know how to handle public records requests by the city's own policy or the state law. I was even today while conducting a proper records request, that I was, someone told me that they were working on something else, and that person is not back from a meeting. Okay? Everyone should know how to handle these requests if someone is gone, everyone. And that person, if no one else is around, must fulfill a public records request if made in public during normal business hours between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. It's in the state law. I totally understand that there are many that some people request all other requests, but the law is the law. If you're the government body, put everything online. This way, it would not be an issue. The issues of getting these records is a major problem. Some people feel that personal private are not, in private are available. Remember, you're not a private entity. You are elected or appointed official in your official capacity or your professional capacity. There can be conflicts of interest in some cases. But when someone disagrees with this, the court system is the only way to find out the truth. That's the opinion that matters the most to me. Some people don't trust other opinions, I agree with that. They could be false narratives or fiction. Remember, one side wins and the other side loses. Maybe this government body should spend money for this, like the $42,000 spent on the tax department. It was signed before the money was approved, and was there any open bidding? Or were my own, excuse me, minority vendors not looked at? Now about the council clerk, I still feel that a company should be hired to handle this. The control would be under the council president that has been done for years. A precedent has been set. The drama, we don't need. Pay $52,000 a year, have a contract, get a performance bond, to go against the company and set the rules. That way, politics is out of this position, and that way, there will be no pipeline to anybody. Now about some facts. I'm not picking on anybody, but I am going to be doing other departments on the budget. And no one is above anything. So currently, I done some research on the fire department. If you're gonna hand those out, you can, if you don't, I understand. So because nobody wants to talk about the budget. The fire department of this city pays out $1,884,847.67 in regular overtime payment and maybe some other cash-out options. Hospitalization, which I got today from the auditor's office, was for 2024, was $3,600, 3, I'm sorry, $368,982.6. Pension for 2024, which was also got at the auditor's office day, was $499,567.09. Grand total, $2,753,396.82. Remember, this does not include workers' comp payments, does not include anything else that I didn't get available today, which I can do later. The budget that was for 2024 was $3,319, 300, I'm sorry, $3,319,783.62. That's over 80% of the budget of the fire department in just three areas. That is absurd. So basically, there was only about $566,000 left over for other. Now granted, they still do get EMS money, okay? And that slowly surely built up, but it wasn't $500,000 at the beginning. It was barely $100,000 bucks when it first started. So as the time has increased, our money is increasing. Plus, most of the firefighters or staff that's working overtime are making over $35 an hour, sleeping at the station at night. And yes, they do do self billing for EMS calls, about $500,000, but for 2024, the information I got was not clear, it wasn't precise about what was the final figure on that for 2024. It's still said estimated. And they do still have a contract with the Westside Ambulance District. So the last two things I want to talk about, one is about plagiarism. If you use someone else's word, ensure that the credit is given out on the material or information that that person or persons created. The other thing I want to bring out, and this is not being mean or nothing, I noticed that the remarks on the, for the July 8th, 2025 regular council meeting were changed. Why? There are numbers in front of everything I talked about, numbers. 1, 2, 3, all the way up, in front of everything I talked about. But not on the mayor, not on the service safety director, the law director, the auditor. But then, when the council president made two remarks, there was a 1, and then there was a 2. Am I being singled out? Does someone have an active, aggressive, erotic behavior against me? Is someone fixated on me and my, and issues that I bring up to the thing? This is retaliation against me? And my rights under the First Amendment is this malicious falsehood or defamation of character? This has gone way beyond normal behavior. This is aggressive manner and is turning into a personal agenda against me. And it's damned disturbing, in my opinion, and could be considered a crime under harassment statutes here in the state of Ohio. I will be looking into this matter more. Thank you for your time.
Any other additional public participation?
Robert Taylor, 41 Plymouth Street. I'd like to ask for an additional five minutes prior to starting here.
Does anybody object to Mr. Taylor having an additional five minutes?
I'll make the motion, I'll, if we have the next five minutes.
I'll second that.
Ms. Sherick has made a motion, seconded by Mrs. Slater, for Mr. Taylor to have 10 minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Mr. Taylor, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you guys very much. First, I want to start with some apologies to some people. I'm gonna start with the fire department. Over the last couple of years that I've been coming up here, I've come across as very harsh against them and some of the things they do. And even, and the police department as well over the years. And part of that is a few conversations I've had with people. Most of the citizens I've talked to in this town, they want most of our money in the general fund going to the safety forces. And I have not met one person yet, just as runs into me at Kroger or the few places I do go, that have a different opinion of that. And the second thing that has brought this on for me is Thursday on my way home from work. And the chief touched on it about the electric bikes. I came up on that, the scene of that tragic accident. And seeing what, and once again, I think, you know, a guy right in the middle of that trying to save that young man's life was Officer Wireman. And everybody there was doing their part. And you see what these guys go through, and that really, that's the first time I've experienced something like that, seeing that. And I just, there's an amount of gratitude for those people that we have in this community that do that job. And I just wanted to publicly apologize to them for the harshness of some of the words I've said to them. Now, that does not necessarily change my opinion on how I view budget and manning and things like that. I just hope that when I do speak about those things in the future, that I can be a little more, for lack of a better term, softer with my words. And that brings me back to the e-bike thing. A crowd was gathered up on the North End, and the people I talked to up there, they've had the same problem and I have, I've had this problem too. There's guys up there, and I mean guys, grown men, riding these bikes on the sidewalk at 35, 40 mile an hour. And how do I know they're going that fast? One, I own two of these bikes, and mine are homemade, and they'll go well beyond 35 mile an hour. Secondly, last summer, or summer before, I was turning into my driveway, and I almost hit a guy on a minibike who was racing a guy on an electric scooter in the street. And the guy on the minibike was on the sidewalk. And I don't know what, what we can do as a council or as a city as far as laws go. I'm sure that's something the state is gonna have a major hand in. But it's a, it's a problem across, and at the North End, and it's a problem across the city because the very next day, a local entrepreneur posted on Facebook, I don't remember where it was, down around Rogers, East Street area, a guy on a gasoline-powered bike going 30-some mile an hour blows through a stop sign, and his hands are full of like flowers or something he picked up along, you know, trash or whatever, and almost got hit by a car. And I'm not in here to ask you to do something immediately, I'm just saying that on the radar, it's probably something that we might want to look at before we have another tragic accident. And honestly, if you're a grown man and you ride them like that, and you can't follow the bicycle laws, I don't have any empathy for you. It's the, it's the driver of the vehicle, because you're gonna traumatize that individual, and you could financially ruin them. For what? Because you're riding 35 mile an hour in town on a sidewalk on a e-bike? Because you ain't got any sense? So that's for that, that issue. Next, I'd like to talk about, and I have tried to steer clear of the drama here. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow myself to dive into it a little bit. Kurt posted a video on Facebook before he deactivated his account of a meeting last year of me. It's one of the first ones I came back to, I was wearing a wig, obviously Bob Taylor was in character. And I was chastising the law director, because he had said that a lot of things are a waste of time, and Brandon, I'd like to apologize to you, you're right. Some of these, some of these requests these guys are making, it's frivolous, they're irrelevant, and they're doing it intentionally to bog down the system so the city government does not run efficiently. It's very clear that's what they're doing. And unfortunately, it's because of Kurt. Let's just call it the way it is. I've tried to come up here and be amicable and call things down the middle and the way I see them, just from my perspective, I've been on Kurt's side a few I've, I've been on Kurt's side a few times on issues. I've criticized Kurt a few times on some issues. Same with Clarissa, same with Kevin, same with Vicki, same with everybody. I, I try to call it the way I see it, and that's just the way I see that. And hopefully in January, we can change all this, and we don't have any more things like that. And secondly, is the attacks on personal, people's families and spouses and, just, man, you got, I don't think, we can get up here and we can talk about our rights and the laws and the politics and all that. I just want to talk to everyone as a father and as a grandfather, as a Marine and as a man. Some of you people are pushing the envelope to where the politics aren't going to matter, the laws aren't going to matter, and we're going to get into some situations we don't want to be into. You're talking to people's wives, you're talking to people's daughters, you're, you're putting people's kids in, in, in dangerous situations, whether you believe it or not, that's what you're doing. And this also goes to all the people over here on FreeWire. We're, we're in society, like to sit behind a keyboard and think they're tough, and make all their comments and say the things they say, and the reason they're doing it over there is they don't have the gumption or the spine to come say, talk to people like that in person. And it's unfortunate, that's how our society has felt. And, you know, and, and it's both sides of this. If we've got sides, people sitting back here have been a part of that, people over here in this crowd have been a part of that. One thing I can say about myself is there's nothing I've ever said online that I will not say to an individual's face. I'll say what I want, to who I want, in any manner I deem appropriate, just so everyone understands that, and that's especially for these people over here on Logan's Network. And that's not me with a tough guy act, that's me talking to you as a father, a grandfather, a Marine, and a man. If, and I, there's a lot, you're a lot more polite when there are real consequences of And I wish we could get back to being that way and just having, talking about the issues, but we don't do that here for whatever reason, and there's a lot of people to blame for it. It's not just Kurt, unfortunately, you know, we can't just blame Kurt and pile up on Kurt. There's a lot of people to blame for that. And I, I wish we could just get back to the issues of the city. And I'm sure I had other things to talk about, but I went on a tangent I didn't mean to go on. That's about it, and you guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Myers.
I do know that there are some state-level laws regarding the e-bikes, but I'd like to refer them to health and safety so that we could take a look at them, and I don't feel any action needs taken, you know, immediately this week, but that way it's referred into the committee and we can start looking at it.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made a motion to refer e-bikes. It was seconded by Ms. Sherrick. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, to health and safety. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? E-bikes have been referred to health and safety. Is there any other additional public participation?
Mr. President.
Mrs. DeShawn.
I would like to respond to Mr. White's comments on the Tuesday, July eighth, regular council meeting minutes. First off, the minutes were previously prepared by former council clerk Wise. They were incomplete. I took those incomplete minutes and finished them up. As far as the numbering of the comments that Mr. White made, as well as the comments made by the council president, the only reason I did that was just for easy reading, in my opinion. I do wish to point out that not only was that done for Mr. White and for Mr. Fankhauser, it was also done for Councilwoman Sherry. Her comments were numbered, and my comments were also numbered. As far as the, why there was no numbering on the reports of the mayor, the service safety director, and the law director, former council clerk Wise had already included their reports within the minutes. I saw no reason to change their written reports that they provide to her, and that's why there was no numbering on those. So I guess that's all I need to say on that. Thank you.
Okay. Additional public participation?
Good evening. Alina Fox, 401 Ridge Avenue. I'd like to thank Chief Dorsey for his mentioning of September being Suicide Prevention Month. It's something that I care deeply about and have worked on in my career. Just want to remind citizens to use 988 and call that service if you're having any thoughts of self-harm or just need some support. They're there to talk, 24/7, 365. So happy to know that Chief takes that in stride and that they're wanting to be more active. And yeah, the walk on September thirteenth, I'll be there. Also wanted to thank Mr. Beeman and FreeWire for posting the video in its totality so that, and this is the video from July 29, 2025, so that citizens were able to actually see the total situation that Mr. Fankhauser had put a video up on YouTube. So appreciate that totality so that there's truth to be seen. Also noted that several of your platforms seem to have been deleted. Just curious what's going on there, since transparency is something that you have professed to want to have in our government. So curious if there's a new platform coming or if there's something we should be aware of. Mr. Fankhauser.
I am not under inquisition right now, so I don't have to respond to your question.
Duly noted. And as a citizen, again, I would like to call for Kurt Fankhauser to resign as president of Bucyrus City Council. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Myers.
Another question for Ms. Fox. Is there a chance, I know that 988 is something that is becoming more prevalent, but I think a lot of people don't know it. Could I maybe suggest that you and Chief Dorsey get together at some point, maybe collaborate to use their platforms to put your message out that you, you delivered there? That way it can, you know, be seen by a lot more people.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Once again, I'm going to state, not going to resign. There's only four months left in this council term, and I am kind of flattered when people with purple hair come up and ask me to resign. Okay, we're still under public participation. Is there any additional public participation?
Terry, were you wanting to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that you strike what he just said about her.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Spiegel has made a motion to strike my comment about the purple hair, seconded by Mrs. Slater. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that won't be in the minutes. Any last call for public participation?
It would be good to apologize.
Okay, I don't see any more public participation, so we're going to move on. Communication and petitions. We had a letter sent from the Ohio Department of Commerce Liquor Division for, this is a renewal for what I believe to be the RIN's newest liquor permit. So I guess with the police chief here, do you have any objection? Does the police department have any issues going on out there that would warrant having a public hearing on that renewal?
I do not actually, I signed the permit today.
Okay. So we, if we do nothing, it automatically gets renewed, or we have until the 26th of September to postmark a letter back to the Department of Commerce requesting a hearing. Does anybody want, Mr. Myers?
I'd like to make a motion actually stating that we do not want to seek a hearing. That way, nobody has to wait until that date.
And I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Myers made a motion that we don't want to request a hearing, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Sherrick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's that letter. There's another letter here from myself as council president, dated 9/1/25. I will read it since I wrote it. "September 1, 2025. Dear Bucyrus City Council, as the city council, we bear responsibility for ensuring the safety and well-being of all Bucyrus citizens, including our police department. Others' Ohio cities have taken additional steps to ensure transparency and build public confidence in body-worn and dash camera programs. For example, Cleveland and Akron have passed ordinances requiring the public release of body-worn or dash camera footage within seven days following any use of deadly force. Columbus has passed an ordinance mandating the activation of body-worn cameras during all official police interactions. With this in mind, I respectfully request that police body-worn and dash cameras be referred to the Health and Safety Committee. I invite the Bucyrus Police Department to present to the committee on how it is currently utilizing these technologies and to discuss possible improvements. I also ask that the committee review the legislation enacted by Akron, Cleveland, and Columbus to determine whether similar policies could benefit Bucyrus. Sincerely, Kurt Fankhauser, City Council, City President, Bucyrus City Council." And then I had included a couple articles directly after that letter regarding the other cities and what they've done, so.
Mr. President.
Mr. Me.
Chief, how do you feel? How do you feel about this?
How do I feel about the sitting down with the, the committee in general?
No. Mr. Fankhauser's letter.
Suggestible.
Well, I, I think good ideas can come from anywhere. I'm open to have a discussion. I don't think that I need anybody to change my policy per se, because I, I look at it like if there's not a problem, if something's not broke, we don't need to try to fix it. We don't have any issues at this time. However, you know, if there's a great idea somewhere, I'm not opposed to looking at something.
Here's my problem. I don't want you to feel that we're micromanaging your department.
Absolutely not. You know? And I look at it, and it needs to be comparative as well. Columbus, Akron, and Cleveland is nowhere near comparative to Bucyrus, Ohio. And that's the reason why I'm like, eh, great ideas can come from anywhere. I wouldn't be opposed to having discussions. However, I've been the chief for less than two months at this time. I think I am doing a pretty good job right now. To start looking at my policy and trying to change things, I think is, is kind of jumping the gun. However, like I said, I'm, I'm not opposed to sitting down and talking to anybody at any time about anything. I have nothing to hide, you know? As long as you're willing to sit down and talk about the council president, you know? Y'all, long have you been council president? Let's sit down and talk about changing how you operate council chambers.
I will apologize. The fact that that's on council letterhead does not mean it comes from the council. That comes strictly from him.
It's not on council letterhead.
I mean, that's the only way I look at it. I've, I've been here for two months. I'm not opposed from taking suggestions from anybody, so.
It doesn't say Bucyrus City Council on that letter.
It even has Miranda's name on the title.
The, the council letterhead has all the council members' names on the side of it.
He does get to alter it, but it's still representing the city of Bucyrus, not just your own policy.
Mr. Me, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
I think in today's age of technology, we should be using it to its fullest.
Chill.
What, what was said?
Nothing. We're good. Keep going.
And there's, there's technologies out there now that, you know, automatically start these cameras to record when sidearms are unholstered, and it could also automatically start the cameras of all the other cameras within vicinity. And I, I don't know if we're utilizing that technology or not, but if we could at least have a discussion and see where, you know, we could.
If I'm not mistaken, we just bought new cameras like in 2002 or 2001.
I don't know how we're, I don't know how we're using them. I don't know what they're programmed to do.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept and file this letter and then request order of the day.
Mr. Myers has made a motion to accept and file the letter. Is there a second? Mr. Me seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, we're going to have to have a roll call vote on accepting the letter. Could you do a roll call vote?
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Slater?
No.
Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
No.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
I believe we have four to accept and file the letter and have three to not accept and file the letter.
I believe it was five and two.
It was five, two.
Okay, there's five to accept and file the letter and two to not accept the filing letter. So the letter is accepted and filed, and Mr. Myers has additionally called for orders of the day, so we're going to move on to the next letter. I'll go ahead and read that letter, too. August 29, 2025. This is from the administration, specifically the mayor, Bucyrus City Council. "Dear City Council, as the mayor of the city of Bucyrus, I am writing to nominate Lynn McKeever and Melinda Tubbs to the Bucyrus Community Improvement Corporation. Please consider approving these nominees. Bruce, signed, Bruce D. Trucco, Mayor of the city of Bucyrus." So I have already got this pre on the agenda under new miscellaneous business. So I'd like to wait till then to have the vote on his appointments, so we just need another motion to accept and file that letter. Mrs. Slater made the motion, seconded by Mr. Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A letter has been accepted and filed. Standing committee reports, plating committee, Mr. Me.
No report.
Does anybody have questions for plating committee? Public lands and buildings committee?
No report at this time.
Anybody have any questions for public lands and buildings? Seeing none, health and safety chair, Mrs. DeShawn?
Just a kindly reminder, Mr. Gobert, at the August 21, 25 committee meeting, I had requested, and you had agreed, that you would email to me your latest revised legis- legislation drafts for Chapter 381 Taxi Cab, Taxi Cab Licensing, and Chapter 711 Peddlers' and Solicitors' Law. Yeah, I haven't received them yet.
And that's because I haven't sent it to them.
That's a good answer.
Makes complete sense.
Completely forgot about it.
Okay. So if you, because you had indicated you had those drafts ready.
Correct.
So if you could email those to me, I would appreciate it.
Is that the end of your report?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Does anybody have any additional for health and safety? Seeing none, economic development, Mrs. Slater?
Did we skip finance?
Oh, I'm sorry. Finance committee, Mr. Myers.
Nothing to report.
Does anybody have any questions for finance committee? Seeing none, economic development, Mrs. Slater?
Yeah, so on 8/28, I believe it would have been Mr. Me and Mr. Moritz couldn't make it, so I think it was Mr. Spiegel went to the JED CETA conference. Apparently, the original speaker wasn't available, so I'm not sure. Hopefully, they got some information we can talk about at the next committee meeting. I believe the mayor was also in attendance with that. And then I wanted to follow up on 8/21. We discussed the re-rep, a meeting with stakeholders, including county and city auditor, planning a visit with the partnership, and I'd like to discuss with Vicki further since she was the secretary for the previous CRA program. As the program develops, I would like to consider an ad hoc in the future, however, right now I believe it should stay within economic development, and that's seen in my report.
Any questions for economic development? Did anybody attend the JED?
That's one. What? Okay.
She just said that.
So, the JED CETA conference on 8/28.
We're recording on Thursday.
But Mrs. Slater wasn't there?
No, she wasn't there.
I was not there because Mr. Moritz and Terry were both gonna go.
Did they want to give like a more detailed?
On Thursday.
Thursday.
During committee.
Thursday, during the committee. We'll do it.
Any last questions for economic development?
And the reason why I didn't attend was because we were trying to avoid a quorum in a way there wouldn't be any issues on transparency there.
Okay, so no final questions on economic development. Service committee, Mr. Moritz.
Service committee, Title IX is officially uploaded documents on demand and ready for review. I want to thank administration, Mr. Goldberg. Councilmember helped with that compared and ready. Hopefully, we can get it going. That's it.
Any questions for service? Seeing none, special ad hoc for rules of procedure, Mrs. DeShawn?
Just wanted to check with the law director and just see how we're coming with legislation drafts for our rules of procedure, Chapter 111 and Chapter 113.
Still ongoing.
Pardon?
Still ongoing.
Okay.
Any additional questions for the special ad hoc? Seeing none, special ad hoc for property maintenance, Mr. Me.
No report.
Any questions for the special ad hoc? Seeing none, special ad hoc for zoning map, Mr. Me. Does anybody have any questions for the special ad hoc? Seeing none, special ad hoc for clerk hiring, Ms. Sherrick?
We have come to, I guess, an agreement as to who we're looking at putting up for the council clerk hire, but at this point in time, I'm really confused as to why they're having an executive session on this later. Because I was pretty sure this is where we give the name and ask the council.
You can give the name, but I'd like to have executive session regarding like the pay and stuff, and then I got on after the executive session, New Miscellaneous.
We can't really make any choices in there, and I'm pretty sure that once we give the name, everybody will have about the same idea as to what the pay would be.
The pay said negotiable on the, when we advertised the.
Anyway, we all agreed on the person that we would like to offer the position to, for it to be a previous council clerk, which is Kelly Patterson. If anybody wanted to see her stuff, feel free, we can let you guys look at it, but I'm pretty sure everybody in here knows who she is.
Okay, any questions for that report? Seeing none, traffic commission, Mr. Trucco is not here, so we don't have anybody for that. Need a motion to accept the committee reports collectively.
So moved.
Seconded.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion to accept and file the committee reports. Mr. Moritz seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Report of city officers, we did not have a mayor's report submitted, and he's not here. We did not have a service director's report, and he's not here. Law directors report, Mr. Goldberg.
So the only thing I have to clarify is whether or not cumulative zoning has been referred to plating, and if not, I would like to refer that.
So cumulative zoning is not what we have in the zoning ad hoc?
Correct.
What is cumulative zoning?
So, when it comes to zoning, there's basically two different flavors, and the one that we have is exclusive, which means that there are different levels of interest for having certain zoning districts. So housing is the most preferred use of land, and manufacturing is the least preferred as far as property law goes. And the exclusive zoning that we have is you can't go up and you can't go down. In cumulative zoning, you can go up, but you can't go down.
So anything allowed in one, if it's passed at certain levels, it all falls into the same allowance?
Correct. So if you're in like the third level of like retail, cumulative zoning would allow you to go up the use preference list, but not down.
That sounds like something that could ease up the zoning and make it more easier, so.
So do you need us to make a motion to?
Yes, please.
Does it need to go to plating, or should it be straight to the zoning ad hoc?
Ah, zoning ad hoc works.
I'll make a motion for cumulative zoning to go into the zoning ad hoc.
I'll second that.
Ms. Sherrick.
And maybe also add plating to that just in case, so we've got it in both?
Ms. Sherrick has made a motion to refer the cumulative zoning to the plating committee and the special ad hoc committee for zoning, seconded by Mr. Moritz. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That has been referred. Moving on, oh, does anybody have any additional questions for the law director? Seeing none, auditor Lewis?
Hi, I don't have a true report as yesterday was a holiday, today was the day we actually processed month ends, and that takes priority over everything else. I did want to, I provided you guys with an article that was released. I'm not trying to realiven anything. It just came out August 27th, and it is, I'm gonna just read it really quickly. This is the city of Belle Fountain, city council. Their safety service director, Wes Dodds, reported to council residents and guessed that Rita, regional income tax authority, will soon be a thing of the past. In 2016, the council voted to move income tax collections and filing out of house and use the Northern Ohio-based company. Since there have been many complaints by the residents of Belle Fountain, and the company has not performed as expected, the city will end its agreement with the entity at the end of December 2025. He went on to say, "The first year of this change will financially break even due to software updates for the city, but every year after, it should save funds." This move was ratified by the council later in the meeting, approving the hire of two tax employees. So just wanted to add that because it was so recent to the discussion. And then I have also been discussing with Chief Dorsey. We have received some payments from the opioid settlement funds. That money has to be used for any expenses that have to do with opioid issues, so I would like to refer appropriations of opioid settlement funds to finance.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made a motion, seconded by Councilwoman Sherrick, to refer opioid settlements to finance. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That has been referred. Any additional questions for auditor Lewis? Seeing none. There's no treasurer's report yet. The police chief's report was already moved up. There is no fire chief's report, so I need a motion to accept all city officers' reports.
So moved. Seconded.
Mr. Spiegel made the motion, seconded by Mr. Moritz. All in favor?
Aye.
Visitors input regarding standing in special committees and of city officers. Do we have any visitors' input? Not seeing any. Okay, I had put on here for the executive session for the clerk hire, I wanted to speak to the council regarding some, because we have to, we do have to set pay.
Can I make a motion to ask for legislation for the new hire of Kelly Patterson at a rate of $25.25, which is what we are currently budgeted for for the remainder of this term? Do we have a tentative start date? She said she, if she could just give her bosses a week, so.
She's told me today she could start this coming Monday, which would be Monday of next week.
Yeah, so.
I'll second the motion.
Do we need any other information for that legislation, sir? Okay.
Ms. Sherrick has made a motion to request, for full council to request for legislation for the hiring of Kelly Patterson as council clerk at a rate of $25.25 per hour with a start date of?
September 8.
I believe it is the 8th of September. It was seconded by Mr. Spiegel?
Yep. Yep.
Assume this needs to be emergency legislation. Okay.
Sorry, as emergency. I should have stated that, I apologize.
Okay, so she did state as emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Abstained.
Okay, we have enough for it to pass. It has passed, so legislation will be requested. I had put.
May I?
Mrs. DeShawn?
Just in my real quick computing, if you remember, I voted no against all of the pay raises. Now, I will say that with Ms. Patterson, she started in 2014, and if I am looking at the rate she started at and how her rates increased, if you would continue with 2014 and go through to 2025, I'm comfortable with the 25.25 because she would have surpassed that. So I just want that, I will say this, had I done this computation, and the figure would have been under 25.25, I would have voted no, not because of the individual, but because of the pay rate.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, we looked at that as well.
Yeah, I didn't vote, by the way, so I was abstaining. Okay, well, there still was enough votes for it to pass. So that legislation's been requested. I put a timeline in the packet, but I'm not seeing it here for this legislation. So anyways, my suggested timeline for this legislation was that the finalized legislation be prepared by the law director's office in its entirety and given to the pro temp clerk by 3:00 tomorrow this afternoon, tomorrow afternoon. That will be in excess of the 24 hours that it should be presented to the clerk for all legislation. And then I was suggesting a special meeting directly before the September 4th committee meetings at 5:45 PM perhaps, to only have this piece of legislation on it as its sole agenda item, and then we could have the meeting, vote on the legislation, no rules would need waived in this situation because of the 24-hour timeline being met. Vicki should, well, all the committee, all the council members should have the legislation, you know, well in advance, at least 24 hours to properly review it before the meeting. That way, we're not, hopefully not correcting and amending legislation on a council floor.
There is gonna be one amendment already, I can see that's gonna need to be made. I'm looking at what you had.
I did exactly as your draft. You gave, exactly, you said take out a paragraph, Section 4 out of the first one, and I, we did it right off of the paper.
I didn't give you a draft. I gave you a draft.
It was as drafted by Slater or something, it has red.
But wasn't me.
No, you, it, it wasn't.
I'm.
It was the email you sent to me.
Yeah.
Email that I sent to you?
Because we did it just like the legislation that was done for the last clerk.
Well, what needs to be changed is the start date.
Well, we just put in there so far, I mean, because we.
Okay, well, I'm just pointing out that I can tell you right now, there's one change that needs to be made, just in my quick reading of what was emailed to me.
I think you told me to put September 4.
That came from the law director's office today, and then I told Lisa to send it to you right away, that way you'd have plenty of time to look at it. But if there's anything in it that you don't see is right, there's plenty of time between now and tomorrow afternoon that it could, you and the law director could touch base with each other and.
Well, and I guess I have to ask, why are you just sending it to me? It should be sent to all council members. I mean, number one, I'm not even on.
Well, I thought Vicki, with your past experiences working in the law director's off, past law director's offices, that you would have more, more of a, you would be able to catch more things with it than anybody else. So do we want to call for a special council meeting at 5:45 on September 4th for the law clerk hiring, for the only purpose being the, not the law clerk, the council clerk hiring?
I'll make a motion for a special council meeting specifically for the council clerk hiring.
I'll second that.
Ms. Sherrick has made a motion to call for a special council meeting on September 4th at 5:45 PM for the sole purpose of council clerk hiring, has been seconded by Councilman Moritz. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? That passes, so that will be... Let's see, September 4th, 15 minutes directly prior to the committee meetings, 5:45 PM. Okay, old unfinished business, is there any old unfinished business?
I have some.
I want to get a rabbit here.
I wanted to question you, Mr. Fankhauser. If you remember back on April the 22nd, I attended the council meeting. However, I did walk out of the executive session, and at the same time, I left the council meeting. So I was unexcused from that meeting, and there has been no deduction from my pay for that unexcused absence. I have sent you two emails requesting that you give the appropriate email that you've done in the past with other individuals that have had, or at least one individual that I know of, that have had unexcused absences, requesting that the auditor deduct from that individual's pay.
I, I have a question about that rule. Was that not after so many, so many unexcused absences before the deductions were made?
No.
For meeting.
Yeah.
For regular meeting.
Yeah, for regular meeting, right. So, I would appreciate it if you would get that email to Auditor Lewis, so that could be deducted from my pay.
So there's two ways we can handle this. One, we could, you know, Vicky was in attendance for the majority of that meeting.
No, I was unexcused, I'm taking the unexcused, I have no problem with that. I just want you to give the email to the auditor, asking for that reduction of 2% of my pay from my next paycheck. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, I, I'm going to, I have a legal question for the law director this time. Mr. Gobert, do, do I have, like, similar to prosecutorial discretion, do I have discretion on the sending of that letter, or am I mandated to send the letter by the Ohio Vice Code?
You were the one that requested that she be unexcused. I voted against it, but, you know.
Again, Section 70513. For each absence from regular meetings of the legislative authority, unless authorized by a two-thirds vote of all members thereof, there shall be deducted a sum equal to 2% of such annual salary. I was not excused from that meeting, so again, I'm asking, please, send an email to the auditor requesting that reduction. I would like this taken care of, especially before I, you know, complete my term.
To answer your question, looking at it, and it does have mandatory language, so you don't have discretion.
So I do have to send the letter. Well, I was, I was trying to help you out, Vicky, because I thought you put in a lot of time. I mean, you've got that whole multi-stack binder sitting there on the desk right now, and, and it's, it's rather obvious that you take the council seat job and go run with it 1,000%, so.
But Section 70513 doesn't say, unless you have a binder that you worked on, you don't have to have that deduction. So if you would take care of that.
So I, I will send the letter out and dock your pay.
Thank you.
At your request.
That was technically at your request.
Additional old and unfinished business, is there any additional old and unfinished business? Seeing none, new miscellaneous business, we already took care of the clerk hiring, the CIC appointment, that is a voice vote only requirement, and so the, the CIC met last week for a reorganizational meeting, and we found the old ordinance pertaining to, because the big question was who, who all's legally on it?
Remember, I brought that up, Ordinance 46-2012.
Yeah, and, and the mayor, the mayor gets to appoint, make four potential appointments, still has to be voted on by council, and so we got two now that he's, he's still thinking on the other two, I believe, and they'd like to move forward so that, that, I think they're wanting to have a CIC meeting this coming Thursday. So, his two appointments being Melinda Tubbs and Lynn McKeever. I'll entertain a motion to. Mr. Myers has made a motion, Mr. Spiegel seconded for accepting the mayor's two appointments for the CIC. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes, any additional new business?
Yes, I know we referred e-bikes. Could this be any unconventional motorized vehicle? I mean, we have the similarities with scooters and those one-wheeled?
Oh, yeah.
Whatever those things are.
Golf carts. Golf carts are licensed.
Yeah, golf carts are licensed.
To be on the road, they're supposed to.
I know, I see some of them not, though.
So I'd like to make a motion to refer non-traditional motorized vehicles?
They're separate class, but it's.
To health and safety?
I'll second that.
Mrs. Slater has made a motion to refer non-traditional motorized vehicles to health and safety. It was seconded by Councilwoman Sherrick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any additional new or miscellaneous business? Seeing none, nobody is absent that needs excuse. The referrals we have out of tonight's meeting, do you have? What, would all referrals were done?
I've got them, if you don't have, we're.
Could you give them to us, Mr. Myers?
Yeah, e-bikes to health and safety, non-traditional motorized vehicles to health and safety, cumulative zoning to plating, and the ad hoc for zoning, and opioid settlement to finance.
And Mrs. Slater's newest one?
That would have been.
That was western.
There wasn't another one? Okay. That's it, we need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion, seconded by Mr. Moritz. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned at 8/18.